Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all of you to our April 8th session for the Culver Town Council. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce, for those folks that you don't know, members of the council. Ms. Jenny Monroe, I think you all know Marlene Mahler, she's not on the council. Ms. Sally Ricciardi, I'm Bill Clevenger, town attorney, Sean Cerici, Mr. Bill Giffens. And to his left is Kevin Dante, our town manager, and to his left is the town clerk, Karen. So, I think we've got a little bit of interest tonight. And first of all, I'd like to start off by letting Marlene say a few words.
Marlene, just a second. When we get the recording statement too, just for the record.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it, Marlene.
First of all, Marlene, this session is being recorded, and your participation in this meeting is your consent to be recorded and rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. So, and kindly, if you have a cellphone or some other type of electronic instrument, if you put it on mute, it'd be greatly appreciated. Marlene?
Hey, I'd like to thank all of you for coming this evening. I know there's been a lot of buzz out there, and I really appreciate all of you coming. I want to make sure that everybody understands that we are here strictly to discuss the comprehensive plan. It's not that they are rezoning anything, it's just a comprehensive plan, and the zoning boundaries are something that are within that plan. But just like all of you that are farmers or whatever, y'all have a plan, you want to expand, you want to buy more acres, you want to buy different cows, you want to retire and make sure that you can keep your land. We all have plans, and that's what this is. It may get implemented, the things within the plan may get implemented in a year, it may get implemented in five years, it may never get implemented, but they have a plan that they're working on, and the zoning is part of that plan. So, they have asked everybody for their input as to things within that plan, and that's the reason we're here tonight, is to talk about, basically, the zoning that, that's what most of us are here for. There may be some other concerns that you have, but we only want to talk about the plan. If that plan is passed the way it is, then each thing within that plan would have to be brought up individually, whether it be the zoning, whether it be the pathways, whatever it is, it would all have to be brought up individually. It would have to have public meetings, it would have to have all of the property owners contacted, and then the zoning would also have to go to the county, and it would have to be approved by the county before they would relinquish that ground. So, it's a long way before any of it would ever be passed, but what we're talking about tonight is only the plan. So, just so all of you understand that, the second thing I'd like to ask is, I know all of us, part of us are extremely frustrated with what's going on or with the plan that we didn't know anything about. We want all of our comments heard, but we also want to do it politely and kindly. The committee has graciously given us another work session so that we could all come in, because we have not been to the plans, to the work sessions before, or to the public meetings before, and they have given this opportunity to come in and talk. So, please be gracious and kind, and just state your opinions and let them know. Larry?
What specifically is the plan as far as zoning goes? I mean, I've heard rumors, but is there a plan out there right now?
The maximum that the state law requires is two miles. They cannot, by state statute, and tell me if I'm wrong, by statute, they cannot go any farther than two miles. Now, they can take any portion of that within the plan that they want to, but they cannot go farther than two miles.
So, where is the plan right now? What are your boundaries that you're proposing?
Can I, Marlene, just, Sean Cerici, I'm the city attorney, I just wanted to offer a couple of comments to kind of frame the discussion in terms of what the plan is and some of the legal requirements. So, a comprehensive plan is something under the Indiana code, the state statutes that the legislature enacts, that it's the first step for any community that wants to enact zoning regulations before they can have a zoning ordinance that required to have adopted a comprehensive plan. And there's very minimal requirements in the state statutes of what that plan has to include. There's a few things, like a thoroughfare plan for your transportation network, and some future land use concepts, things like that. But beyond that, it's left up to any community that wants to have zoning to put a lot of things into this plan that, or any comprehensive plan beyond what the minimums are to have zoning. I will just share, I am new to becoming the attorney here. I've lived here in Culver for the vast majority of my life, but I just became the attorney at the first of the year. So, I haven't been involved in this plan development process, but I have read it, and I just wanted to share just two things. So, where I see the only spot that it really talks about expansion of the two-mile zone, on page nine of the plan, there's just a couple of sentences, and it says, "Opportunities to expand the current extraterritorial planning boundary to its full allowable two-mile radius should be explored whenever they arise, and particularly whenever access to town infrastructure and resources in the unincorporated areas contiguous to the Culver's town limits is considered. Expansion is not contemplated with the intent to change the current grarian nature and use of the surrounding area, but due to the need to plan appropriately when changes are made that would affect the future of Culver." So, I would just say there's very similar language to that that is in the existing plan that was adopted in 2014, and it's basically just saying it's in there in case in the future there's an opportunity or a need for the town to expand that they would look at it. But I just wanted to point you to, in the statutes about this, it's Indiana Code 36-7-4-205, and subpart D, it says, "To exercise territorial jurisdiction outside the corporate boundaries of the municipality, the municipal plan commission must provide in the comprehensive plan, regardless of the date the plan is adopted, for the development of the contiguous unincorporated area designated by the commission, that in the judgment of the commission bears reasonable relation to the development of municipality." So, it's just, it's language that needs to be in the plan, because we already do exercise part of that allowable two-mile jurisdiction. And by my reading, all it says is that should a need to expand it present itself, that the town is going to consider it. But there is no, Larry, to your comments, as far as I know, there is no plan with details in here or in discussions of expanding to any certain dimensions or to any road or distance that I've heard of. So, I just wanted to offer that as a little bit of background. I was staying out in the hallway to, for individuals that I did not plan for, and again, my apologies oversight-wise. The one thing, today I was fielding calls, and it's a small town, and there's a lot of talk. What this isn't, is not an annexation. It is incredibly difficult to annex property. It is not in the interest of the town to extend its corporate limits, we have not discussed that, and we would have to provide utilities and the expenses out there. So, it is not an annexation that was out there. Also, property taxes are ineffective by the zoning ordinances. Indian Township is on their rates, Culver, the order to change property taxes, it would require incorporation, and that's not on discussion. The one thing that we realized during our last town council meeting is we were discussing a comprehensive plan for 2040 about Culver, but Culver is more than just the corporate limits. It extends outside those corporate limits to people who live out in the country. What we didn't gather, and this is an oversight possibly, we felt like we could benefit from incorporating more voices directly from the people who are out there and not being spoken for in here, which happens occasionally. The invitation and the setting up of this meeting is to try to capture those voices. It is not to push forward with any type of zoning or rezoning. It is to hear what your thoughts are about it that were suggested in the 2040 plan. What should we pay attention to as we move forward to the people who live right on outside those corporate limits with us? What do we need to pay attention to? Some of the things that were mentioned to me in the hallway is, where is the comprehensive plan? So, well, number one, increase communication. The comprehensive plan is found within our webpage. I cannot print out individual copies. Not a Kinko's, although I did work at one. What we can do is direct you, I can help you, if you need help on that town page or show you something or a reference, I can get you. I've heard some comments about the maps already. Keep them coming. I like that. But go to the webpage, you can find it, it's under the 2040 comprehensive plan. There are links to the state statute in there that discuss zoning, if you're interested. There's also some additional documents that are mentioned within that. Definitely check it out, please. And if you need help getting a survey, getting some more feedback, would love to help you. My email is on the website, you can call me, I'm here eight to four, a little later sometimes, and we'll field phone calls, okay? Just some framing for you guys, just so you understand why we asked you all to come in. And I sure did not anticipate all you, and I apologize, that's on me.
I think it would be nice, too, if anyone is already, we are beyond our town limits with some of our zoning, and a lot of the feedback I've had over the years from some of the people who live on the lake where we control zoning, but they're not necessarily in the town, because we never annex. Those property owners compare it to taxation without representation. So, if we're controlling zoning in an area, but they don't control voting on the people sitting here or the fact that these people make appointments to our plan commission, that's become an issue, and I think it's probably an issue for people currently not in our zoning area. And it's, I think, one reason we've resisted, other than piecemeal. So, like, in the south end of town, when Wayne McGee brought his property in, we ended up annexing, but it took us, now, a solid 10 years to be able to get utilities out there through the current project. But I'd love to hear from people who are currently already in our zoning area, but not inside town limits as a Culver taxpayer, but a county person.
First question?
Can you just stay out of the planning period? You have to be in the comprehensive plan?
Are you talking as an individual, sir, as a group, as a whole town?
Well, as a 46511.
So, I guess, and I-
Do we have to be in the comprehensive plan?
I think that we have an existing two-mile jurisdiction, which you can see the map of it here. It doesn't, in all corners, extend to the full two miles, but I don't, I haven't heard, I think it would be a great disruption to what's already going on in these areas if we were just, the board were vote to give up that zoning jurisdiction and the existing exercised extraterritorial jurisdiction.
One of these maps over here on the wall, is it one of these?
That's just the town.
Messed it up, sorry. Maybe we can hang it up while I hang something here. But I think at least before this comprehensive plan will likely be adopted sometime in the, this year, I would anticipate. No, sir, no. This is the existing, and it would be just those extensions where you see the blue line. That would be roughly two miles. The thing is, you can't end it, it's not supposed to end halfway through somebody's field. So, you have to end on an even flat line, right? So, it's not going to be a nice straight line like it's illustrated, but you can see the blue. So, we're already extended where you see the colors, those are current, excuse me, those are current extensions, and those are where we're at currently.
Make sure you're very clear. The blue line is what's permitted.
That's what's permitted by state statute.
But that's not what's in existence.
That's not what is in existence. Like I said, the colored portions, Russ, is what is in existence correctly, but thank you, absolutely. So, yeah, the point I was going to make is I don't foresee, at least between, you know, who knows in the years to come, but I think the thought is, a lot of work has gone into this plan so far. Sometime in the coming months or this year, I think the plan commission in town anticipate adopting a version of this plan, and I don't anticipate before that happens, a decision being made to give up the jurisdiction that's already been exercised outside the town boundaries. So, to the extent that there is some extraterritorial jurisdiction already being exercised, it has to, by that statute, be referenced in the comprehensive plan. And so, I don't foresee that going away. But at least the explanation I've tried to provide, I think this language, just that they would only consider expanding it if it was an opportunity that made sense for both the people in that area that would be expanded and the town itself.
So, where, where-
Yes, sir.
For this two-mile radius, where's the center point?
It's actually not a two-mile radius. What it is, it's a two-mile zoning expansion from the corporate limits, from where the town limits are, both west, north, south, and east.
So, anywhere from there, it's two miles further?
It's two miles further from the west point.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can be, it is. From what I've heard, I think a lot of people would like to know approximately, where are you talking? Because nobody can figure out, are we going to Fair Road, are we going to Pine Road? You know, where are we going to, north, southeast, and west?
So, if I understand right, and this is one of the things, even though this does show it, you want to know exactly where it would be.
Well, I think most of these people would like to know that.
I agree. And so, one of the things I'm going to get done in the next couple of weeks is produce a map that has that proposed. And again, that doesn't mean we're acting on it, okay? I want to make sure, just because I make a map. I'll try to get that on the website as well.
What's going on?
Okay. Pardon me? No, I already got that one down.
They signed a sign-in sheet that they wanted to speak.
Is there a sign-in sheet someplace?
Right by the back door.
Yeah, okay. Okay, one thing that would help immensely is if you want to make a comment, if you please give your name and address, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
11161618th Road. When was the last time you did this expansion? When was it put into effect?
Give me the current.
How many years ago did that go into effect?
The last comp plan was 2014.
So, this was part of a comp plan that you included? I want to know the existing map you have that's presently, you're part of the zoning, where I see the signs on my road that says this is where the zoning starts. When did you establish your-
That's before my time, and I was ten years.
And I guess what I would, my only question, I think most of the people in this room, I live outside of this area, and when I bought my property out on 18th Road, the person, the farmer I bought it from, he said, "The first, the most, biggest priority of your existence here is never allow that zoning boundary to be expanded." And the whole point is, is I sit outside the voting area, I sit outside the city area, but yet I have council members that are basically trying to plan my future with us having no input. And then I guess, what I want to know is give me the process to do it properly that we can, if we don't want to be a part of this, give me the proper process that I have to do through the county regulations or the city regulations that I can, that I can do the proper ordinances or whatever to get established that we don't do any expansion.
So, I can just respond really quickly. So, this is kind of going back to the initial comments that Marlene and I made, that this comprehensive plan, it's going to, because we've already exercised some measure of the extraterritorial jurisdiction many decades ago, at least. You know, we have folks like Mr. Mason, who's worked for the town and been involved in government for many years, and he said, "It's been at these boundaries before he can remember." So, it's not that this plan will not make any changes to that. We, the town has annexed new territory, so it expanded its town boundaries within recent years, but we haven't correspondingly gone and expanded the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Every time the town boundaries get bigger, you could go two miles from that boundary in every direction, and that hasn't happened in decades. But, so in terms of what you can do to get involved, never will, regardless of this, if this plan was adopted tonight exactly as written, nothing is going to change with these boundaries without cooperation between the town council, the town plan commission, and the county commissioners. It's a give and take, because already the land that is not in the county, the county government has exercised jurisdiction in terms of zoning, and their zoning jurisdiction applies everywhere in the county that's not incorporated in a town or already uncovered by extraterritorial jurisdiction of a town. So, in order for the town to expand, it would have to be a cooperative effort with the county. And so, there's plenty of public approvals that would have to happen in that process, and you would have plenty of opportunities to voice your opinion to both the elected representatives here and then folks who are on, live in the extraterritorial jurisdiction do have representation on the town plan commission. So, there's a member that's appointed to represent that, people that don't live in the town. So, that's another voice, and then your elected officials at the county are a voice as well, if it were ever to come to that at some point in the future.
Yes, sir.
How am I going to gain from this? What do I have to gain?
I don't know that it's a gain or a loss.
What am I going to gain? What are you going to gain? What am I going to gain? I know I'm going to lose. What am I going to gain?
Yeah, so I think that when the folks, many decades ago, whenever-
This is now.
Yeah, no, no, I'm getting there. So, the folks, the legislatures, the senators, and the state representatives to go down to Indianapolis every spring and winter and pass laws, they created this system, and they told local governments like Culver that if you want to organize how you regulate land and pass zoning, these are the steps that you have to do. And in contemplating that, they thought, any town that exercises zoning, you see it everywhere around the country, it's like a town doesn't end at its borders. The development starts to creep out, and there's, I think the folks at the general assembly, when they pass these laws, thought that local governments are going to, they have an interest in how the land immediately at their boundaries starts to develop, and as it gets closer to that town, it's kind of a dance between the folks out there and the folks in the town. And as the town might expand, there's going to have to be some give and take among those people. So, I can understand that the way the law is written, I think, is from that perspective, that it's from the town that is exercising the zoning jurisdiction, so they don't get boxed into, you know, a circle of their existing boundaries and never able to interact. If it's somebody who lives out in that outside jurisdiction, and they moved there because they thought they were in the country, and decades later, the town starts to encroach, I could see where you might see that there is no benefit to you, but-
You guys can afford to be deep lakes. You belong to a farm department, you have to make that full time, you can't afford that. You can't afford new lakes. Are we going to get the seven needings where we live as the people who you think Culver per se? Sewers, roads, sidewalks, public living, you can't afford that.
No, you would not, unless you were inside the town limit.
No, that'd be annexation, we're not talking about annexation.
The zoning laws on my property, probably haven't any say. If I, if I want ten chickens in the town of Culver, that's the limit. Not to have the same when I live in the country?
No, there's, there's different rules for those sections that are thrown there, agricultural.
For us in your situation, we want no power to that. I don't anyway. I, I talk with myself, not anybody here. I want no power.
Yeah. And I, and one, one other thing to consider, and I'm by no means any expert at all in what the county's zoning, but I would venture to guess that probably half of the regulations that are in the town zoning ordinance probably overlap with the county's zoning ordinance and you're already subject to those. There's probably a lot more restrictive ones in the town because it's, you know, it's.
People part of that, extend your zoning area.
What's that?
Would we become part of that?
If the zoning. Yes, if it was extended, you would be subjected to whatever the Culver zoning is.
But we're not going to get the seven needings as the town people do, as we live outside Culver.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So paper roll, like George, extra police force, but the county sheriff right now, you extend your zoning.
That's not extending.
But you would still remain, I'm sorry, you would still remain with the county sheriff. Essentially, if they, if they extended the zoning, if that were to happen.
Yeah.
It would still be agricultural. As if it's agricultural now.
Now, but these rules can change in the next five, I think about my grandkids.
I appreciate that. And that's, that's an absolutely fair point.
We're going to go 2016 with the next one.
So the.
2016? I'm serious.
Yeah, no, no, just to get back to your services question. So just back to the, like I said, I think the legislatures gave these powers to local communities to be able to plan for their future a little bit as far as land development outside their existing boundaries, so they don't get locked in. But as far as services, nobody that gets the city or town services unless they're paying taxes. And if, you would not be paying the taxes of the town even if the zoning was expanded. But backing this all back up to where we started, there's no existing plan to expand the, the two mile jurisdiction beyond what it is. All they've said is, if the opportunity arises, perhaps that could occur in the future.
It brings a small fire before it gets big. Joel Fisher, 1647518th Road. You said a key word there to begin your statement responding to Golly, regulate. Regulation, I think, is what scared a lot of the folks that are in this room right here. This is one step in the direction that increases your ability to regulate our ground, which we don't want. I will tell you, lived, lived here basically my whole life. The folks who are in this room have cooperated with this community, the Lake Association, to enormous lengths for decades. I mean, we have worked with the Lake Max Environmental Council, you know, to, to help, you know, with pollution into the lake, whatever it may be, we, we've made these, that are in. You've got a heavy livestock presence around this lake. We, we've taken those steps to help protect this body of water. Our question is, where does it end? If this is in that plan, that's one step in your favor, not our favor. If we wanted to live within this town buffer, this town zone, I would have moved to town. I wouldn't have bought my family farm. I didn't make that choice, as a lot of the folks who are in this, this room right here. Regulation, that's the word you said that probably picked a lot of people's radars in here. That's one thing that we don't need more regulation. The agricultural community is the most regulated industry in the world. The last thing you're going to need is somebody standing over us with another hammer, hammering something on us. Sadly, you can say it doesn't apply to this zone, it doesn't apply to this zone, but that'll change. That'll change, next thing you know, we'll always sit back in this room, because we took this step and we voted in the plan and then it went to public hearing, then it got voted through, it got shanghaied, then the next thing you know, that area changes. That's how this whole thing starts, is by being in that plan, which we do not want it in that plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe what we need to say in the plan is, we will not expand into these areas that are marked ag or however they're currently zoned in the county. There, I think the county is an ag zoning, correct? The county zoning, yeah.
We have that.
So maybe that's part of the point unless, because right now you can't, we generally don't expand unless we're expanding with the annexation anyway. We're already into the two mile zone, well beyond where we'd ever even get to an annexation in our lifetimes, correct?
Yeah.
So in some ways, what you're saying is, if, if the plan today states that we will never expand, or you know, this plan is not going to expand into anything that's ag in the county without someone wanting to come in the way annexation works, I don't know if we.
But I, I think Jenny, it has been, it's been mentioned a couple of times and it's actually in the state statute, why? What's, what's the demonstrated need? And I think that, and rightfully so, you know, the reservation is being voiced, that the wording in the plan might obviously is creating this, not misunderstanding, it's creating this apprehension. So the word may need to be revised. I will just, on the devil's advocate of that, even if they've said in the plan that it's not going to happen, a future council and future county commissioners could choose to do that. And whatever it says in the plan would not be a barrier to that. It would, it would, all those public approvals to change the zoning would have to happen. And that could, that could still occur. But like I said, it hasn't happened in decades and we hate to see no future prospect of that happening imminently.
Yeah, I think he actually, I think he actually just answered my question. Barb Johnson, 18243 West Shore Circle. You had mentioned that our county has a voice for us. Who is that appointed person and how were they appointed? Who appoints them?
Kevin, do you know the answer to that? The, the extraterritorial jurisdiction representative on the plan commission?
It's Don Fox and it's appointed by, he's appointed by the county, named the commissioners. So is that the commissioners that would make that decision?
Yes.
It's made at the county level, it's not, it's not anyone from the. And he's the only one who has a voice for that bracket?
Yeah. A part, a part here, yes, a part from yourself. You have your own voice as well and. I, I know Steve, he's not, not currently. Yes, sir.
Bob Hawson, 207792th Road. I looked through this plan, this hundred and thirty some page proposed program. And on page fifty-seven, you talk about the future development's character map. Areas include, part of one of the areas in that plan are rural management of residential agriculture. What do you mean by that? You, does anybody on your board, anybody on your steering committee make their living in agriculture? Anybody at all, please tell me. My son, is what I'm saying here, has a degree in agriculture, the other one does, all my grandchildren have a degree in agriculture. Why do you think you need to come out there and help manage the agriculture? We don't need that. We got advantage. We got advantage.
I don't think there's anybody on the steering committee that's outside of the town of Culver, is there?
How, how are you going to do management? What steps? If it's in your plan, you should have a, a, some kind of concept of how you're going to do that. Please explain that. Can anybody?
You know, we could look at the wording on that, definitely.
You need a lot of different wording, a lot of different.
Each one of those character areas on that map, so the area surrounding the lake was called like conservation area. I think the other was like rural conservation and each one of them kind of definitely.
One, one final thing, at the very end of the comprehensive plan, it talks a summary of public input survey that was put out to Culver resident. You only have two hundred and seventy respondents, which is only about twenty percent of the population. So it must not be a major concern to them. And not one of the inputs that they listed had anything to do with expanding zone. So why is, why do you feel it's necessary?
And why, why?
Why is that wording in there?
Exactly. What, what's the, what's the reason for wanting to expand it? Your citizens aren't concerned with it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, if somebody, I had a couple of observations. So having worked in government in one respect for the last twelve years, I would, I would push back a little bit that that two hundred and some number is a pretty impressive participation rate, but, but I.
Two hundred out of how many?
Well, it's, sir, it's, it's, it's very difficult to get people to.
There's a hundred and some people sitting right here.
I know. But putting that aside, I think that, I think that from everything I've heard so far, that this language could be changed to make you feel more comfortable about the plan. But that is not going to.
Our, our concern is, if your constituents aren't concerned about it, wasn't one of their areas in the respondents, then who wants to put it in there?
Yeah, that's a point, but the point, the point I was just going to make, we could change this plan and eliminate a lot of that stuff. It's just not going to provide you any more protection leaving this, like you, you wouldn't feel better leaving here like, this is never going to happen. I, but I, I think you're right, it could, it could be removed.
I've lived since nineteen seventy, and right now the boundary stops to my north. And map I've seen is going to take a clear down to one ten, which will take all of my place.
And my, that would.
What game?
I think though, one of the things that, it doesn't remove the state statute.
Yeah.
But what it, like we said, this comprehensive plan is, is a vision for this council of the town. And if, if the constituents, I'm sorry, if the constituents are who are sitting here, who are impacted by it, are not wanting to get in there, it's the Jenny, the Ms. Monroe's point, then the wording has to be changed. We have to revisit it and hence why we're kind of list, sitting here today, listening and hearing it. We need to hear it.
Everything I've read through on this entire thing, the only place it's going, it's going to benefit is the citizen of Culver. The only benefit, citizens of Culver.
Going down, appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Jerry Greason, 1599512. Um, my question is, talking about expanding the town limits.
Yeah.
No, I mean limits. But, you know, why are we doing that when the population in the town is tanking?
I think Sean's point is that we're not doing that. It's, it's always a consideration that you can, by code, just as you can annex if someone wants to be brought in. Statutes made that very difficult too, though, you have to have someone who wants to be annexed. That would be changing the boundary. But changing zoning is not necessarily something that we need to do, it's just an option.
Why is it part of the comprehensive plan then?
It's been a part of our comp plan probably for two other rounds.
We're asking you, why?
Why?
When you, you're, you're talking, changing it for Culver. Right? The town of Culver. And what I'm saying, the population in the town of Culver is on a downward trend. So why, why are you expanding the area for zoning?
We aren't. It just says you could.
That you could.
The last plan we had also said that Jerry, that we didn't expand. I don't remember the last, it hasn't expanded in my time at council. And I've been seventeen years, I think.
Talking about the zoning.
Zoning, yes.
People are confusing town limits with zoning, with zoning boundary. Two different things.
Yes.
Make sure everybody understands, two different things.
I understand, but again, I live, my, the zoning right now stops at my north property line. Plan I've seen is taking a clear down to one ten. But now, I keep hearing where it's not, it's just something that could happen. It's, it's part of the comprehensive plan. And I know, I would like to know why your planning's.
So I think, I don't have, I have, there's no right or wrong answers to a lot of this stuff. But when you say the population is tanking, I mean, part of, part of the goals of this plan is to promote population growth and what are some strategies that can be utilized and brought to bear to help, help that happen? And I think all, I think we're in a little, I totally agree, the language can be changed. But I think we're a little bit talking over each other on these things that I, as I read this, it's like, we want to employ whatever tools we need to, to help grow and expand as it makes sense. And that's, whether that language is in here or not, if an opportunity presents itself later and the town wants to move on it, 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 it's a possibility.
Just one last comment, I promise up here. If you're going to take a look at re-changing some of this wording, are you going to put people from Agriculture Committee on the Steering Committee? Is there any law on there now?
Be a good idea.
Not a damn one on there now.
But also be good if we can get some people to, right now, we've hired someone to look at the zoning ordinance because there's a lot of inconsistencies in it that we've had issues with on our plan commission. And we also put a moratorium on solar, so we have a committee working on that. It would be nice to have some people from the ag area on that, because that's the most affected area. Steve Gorski, whose office is right across the hall here, just formed that committee. Basically trying to get volunteers for it. If anyone here would want to sign up, get your name to Kevin.
Mention basically, we're meeting before the next planning commission. I'd love to have a couple of people from the Agriculture Committee.
A meeting every month.
You know, it took years before they put a ag program back in school, that's why my grandchildren.
I, I think there was a hand up back by the map.
Yes, sir.
My, my question, I guess, is a lot of people wanted to know why.
Excuse me, would you please identify yourself, please?
Karen Collins, Twentieth Road, Culver, course of five one one. I, I think everybody's skirting the issue of why. And I, I've just lived here like twelve years and what I witnessed from where I came from is in the nineteen eighties, let's say, going down Route fifty-nine outside Chicago with nothing but farmland. And then they took the boundaries of Naperville and all these other areas. And you see the side farms are gone, now they have paper, there's no farms left. Because with zoning boundaries, you can do other things. Yeah, go ahead, put a strip mall up. You know what? Want apartments behind my land? I don't want a subdivision, that's why I moved here. But with zoning, I'm not saying zoning, oh yeah, it's zone, go ahead, put up a twelve flat, put up a, you know, what's happened in the town of Culver. I'd hate to live behind that. But with zoning, that's what happens.
So just one response to that, so what Mr. Mason said before, there's the distinction between the town limits and then the extraterritorial jurisdiction limits. And there's also a distinction between, that just sets who is the decision maker of your zoning. Right now, if you're in, outside of Culver's limits, the decision maker of your zoning is the county. But that doesn't, even if Culver were to exercise a broader two mile jurisdiction, that wouldn't change the map of, if you're an agriculturally zoned property, that wouldn't change that. That's a whole separate other process to change, change the zoning of a particular property or the zoning map. And right now, if you're outside of Culver's jurisdiction, that's controlled by the county. But even if, like, again, there's no plan to expand Culver's jurisdiction, but even if they did, it wouldn't change you, if you're a farm now, it wouldn't change.
Nobody has said why, out of the seven rings, why? Why, why, why do you want to change it?
And, and I think, I can't speak for the people that wrote this plan, but I, I think that this is probably just something that has been in past plans and all it's saying is, if there's a need to expand, they'll consider it. There's not a why of like, it's actually happening. I think that we're just.
Speak for, while we want, let one of them speak.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
I can, I can tell you I don't want to change and I also know it's unlikely to change it. But we also have people currently in a zoning area that are not inside town limits that don't like the fact that they don't have representation and I frankly agree with them. If you can't vote someone on or off the board, but they control your zoned area, I think that's a problem. So I personally don't want to change it. I think we're already far enough expanded zoning wise. Now, annexation wise, if someone wants to come in and we, we can do that, you look at that as a separate scenario.
Forget, forget annexation, right now, you're talking about extending the zoning boundary.
No, I'm not.
You have to go to one ten. Is that not right?
That's been up there for a long time, but yes. All right, that's all the way, that's not all the way to one ten though, sir, but yes.
Let's soak it up. Again, the blue line is what you're allowed to do.
That's right.
They're already allowed to do that.
I don't want to go up to the new line, I am fine with where we're at, that's what I'm saying.
Questions please?
I'm just saying.
If state, you're zoning, goes ahead. In my opinion, this can lead to eminent domain, if you guys can control.
This can lead to eminent domain, if you guys in control, you can do what the hell you want with. It can lead to eminent domain, and you are, you already know that, if this is only goes true, you're in charge, give up what the fuck you want forever.
Excuse me, excuse.
You say it's left, I apologize, admire it.
But the county also has a power around our domain.
Well, we don't need two people, Langrady, county's good enough, Culver, stand your lane. Stand your lane.
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Hanson, seven sixty Westford Drive, and I own a couple of acres north of town here. I think what bothers some of us, or me, I don't understand all of it, that it's in the comprehensive plan, could it just be taken out? It's just a part of that, and as you say, the government, the state, the county, all has control over it if something else wants to change. But could it just be taken out of this plan?
So.
And when the, when the need comes, and they, and something needs to be changed, then look at that. But it bothers me that it's in this plan like this, it's written.
You're worried about making Culver a more attractive place for people to move to and become permanent residents. But I don't think any of you set, can explain how extending the bound, zoning boundary is going to accomplish that for town of Culver. I don't think any of you can.
I don't think it will, it it hasn't for thirty years.
Why are you gonna be in the comprehensive plan?
I don't think our problem for uh keeping full-time residents is a zoning problem. I really don't, I don't think it's an annexation problem or zoning.
We're talking about this area.
So just one response, Ms. Hanson, that I think the language could totally be modified, but just going back to that, there has to be something about. Um that we do exercise jurisdiction outside the town, which we already do. And it could be saying that it's limited or define what it is, but just going back to that statutory provision, it says. To exercise extraterritorial jurisdiction outside the corporate boundaries of the municipality. The municipal municipal plan commission must provide in the comprehensive plan. Um I'm skipping a parenthetical here, but um. For the development of the contiguous unincorporated area, so it would at least have to reference in the plan that we do exercise. Extraterritorial jurisdiction, maybe it shows a map of what we've actually used or something, we'd have to reference that in some degree, because we already are exercising that power. Wouldn't have to say anything about if an opportunity presents itself will expand. If that opportunity did present itself, the council could consider the merits of it at that time.
Part of the, part of the session is to gather ideas, and I've heard a lot of different ones, and to give feedback for the comprehensive plan. If we were to rephrase, if it has to be in there as a consideration, state statute already allows it. If we were to rephrase it to something like, although the town of Culver has state statute to extend. To a two mound, two mile boundary outside of the corporate limits, it currently does not have a demonstrated reason. To extend this boundary. But that, it's it's saying, we can't answer your question why, we don't have a reason to do it. We've had it on the books for the last two comprehensive plans, so let's just call it what it is. State statute says we can do it, but currently we do not have, or nor can we demonstrate a reason to do it.
I think what's making most of the people here nervous, and I'll just say it straight out, you can't explain why, but yet you've got it in the plan. Now that, if you work for an organization as a manager, and you plan something that way, they fire you. They flat out fire you.
So you should just show the current zoning area, you call those. Maybe do the downtown. That transition area, and if you're not planning that, that characterization map already shows what's in town limits. And then the zoning area, and instead of having it expanded the blue line, we take out any character development. That isn't within the current zone.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh Ms. Andrew Josky, I'm on nineteen four seven eight twenty eighth road, and my question is about the petition. Um, will, is somebody be looking at that, does the petition even matter if, if. I mean, is anything gonna be done with that to, if we were, wanted to stop this zoning?
I can answer that.
Number wise, is there a certain number?
It's not an actual petition, all it is, is the remarks of people that live in the township. That were against them extending the zoning boundary. It does not do anything other than, like all of you people coming tonight to put in your remarks. It's just a piece of paper saying that we oppose it, and they will put that in their notes as to people that have objected to it.
Thank you, ma'am, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Larry Fisher, ten seven hundred Dennis Court, Indiana, uh my wife and I own. Farm there in quarter of South Community, ATB, so we're outside of the current boundary. But we would be included if you went all the way to Detroit. My concern is if, well, first of all, uh in your zoning maps you have currently. Can you identify an agricultural district, please?
There's a conservation preserve here that I have a map of it on here, it's.
Are you talking about what's?
I went on the G I, yes, pulled up that map. And I did not see an agricultural district in the two mile jurisdiction.
There's actually one that, it's an interesting case, we we had brought, uh before the zoning. It was changed in two thousand, I think seventeen, it went to S one for reasons that. And so.
I can explain it.
It it, yes, and there may have been, the gentleman came back and petitioned, it's at just north of the academy, petition for an A one. It was granted back, they turned it back to agricultural, so there are some agricultural ones in, within the zoning.
Everything outside of the corporate limits is S one, am I not right?
The majority, the majority of it is, because when they extended the zoning boundary the last time. Like on State Road seventeen, it went from the south side of Beavers to the north side of the uh uh factory out there. Um ATB, Redwood, it went out farther, but when they expanded that, the town of Culver did not have an agriculture zoning. So they automatically put that all into S one, and so all of that agriculture.
Now you're going back.
Right, that's the last time that the zoning boundary has been expanded. Okay, there was no agriculture land, no agriculture zoning per se then. Since then, we have, there have been people that have come in and complained because they took them out of agriculture from the county. And put them in S one when they changed that zoning boundary, so they created a agriculture zoning. And then as those people came in and said, I wanna be back into agriculture. Then they have changed it and put it back into agriculture and took it out of S one and put it back into agriculture. But any of those people that were changed, if they have not come in and asked for it to be changed, it's not, it's still in S one.
Your maps do not start up to date, but my point of the matter being is typically. When the, it's a boundary, put it in a two mile jurisdiction, the vast majority is with S one. Which allow, you know, agricultural uses, but what most specifically, the thing that I guess. It's limiting, because if you've got cattle or have a uh operation, you're limited. And I can't find the numbers that they're limited to, but you are limited, even in your agricultural. You can still have, you know, animals, but again, uh you're limited, okay? Outside in the area that we currently are, we're zoning A one county, we're not limited. And if we have several people around us that have handle operations, that if they expanded the boundary. I'm glad to see that you said we can pull back on that, but if they didn't. It puts a real hardship on those people that currently have operations. So that is my concern is, is that there are, I guess, there's a gentleman said here. There is negative benefit going in to the two mile jurisdiction on people that are in the agricultural business. So, exactly, that is my concern.
And a comment to that, if any of you are in that S one zoning. If you come in and talk to the council and ask them to put you back in the agriculture. Try it, see if they'll bring you back to agriculture. We have an agriculture, yes, we just, you just, you just did one about three weeks ago.
And so just the.
Yeah, we did.
The process of that would be talking with Steve Gorski, who's the the planning building commissioner, and. And then there's an application that's made to the uh the plan commission to, there's a public hearing to change the zoning map. And then that is presented to the town council for approval.
Are there, I'm just gonna make sure, 'cause I'm the guy that undersides the room, are there people out in the hallway? If you guys could afford that and come on, step in and and please ask questions or clarification. Um I just don't wanna miss a voice or a question out there. Sure, they're probably. Put us in this small room, yeah, that'd be me. Definitely.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Name please, name please. Excuse me.
I don't see how you can do that, though, if you you're exceeding two miles to get there, and don't you, if it's, if a, if a landowner is. Partial town zoning, partial county, if the majority of his property is in town, then his whole property is in town. If the majority of his property is in county, then he's all county. And the only way to get all the way to Queen Road is if you exceed the two miles, and I don't see how you get anybody's majority property.
Sir, would you identify yourself, please?
I did, Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, then look out here, it looks like you go the east side of Max Seven Culver.
Not just under, yeah, yeah.
But I, but I've seen drawings that go all the way to Queen Road, how do you get there?
Yeah, there's some, there's some drawings that exist, there's one that shows a a zoning radius, actually. That, that's an old one, that's not accurate, right? It it is very difficult, because I think there's regulations, and Sean can speak more towards this, but I think there's regulations about not splitting parcels and. You, it it it's not. That's exactly right. So these lines can be somewhat elusive sometimes the way.
Looks as though we already are to Queen Road and apart here, though, is that correct?
Those are all agreed upon when those boundaries were created. Some boundaries are less than two miles, some are more. It was a, an agreement between the county and the city as to what the two mile boundary was eight. And that goes back thirty years, nothing's changed.
So these are thirty, these boundaries exist in thirty years.
Well, so if if the county, the county government has the jurisdiction outside, if they're able to agree with who's gonna exercise that. Then that is, is permissible, so and apparently that happened in some portion many, many years ago.
Thank you, ninety-four. But thank you, yeah.
I I have one more comment, just just so everybody understands. Back in two thousand six. The planning commission for the county and the planning commission for the town. Looked at some of the problems we were having, because as things existed with these boundaries. Part of the property was in both jurisdictions, so it was decided at that time. Whichever jurisdiction had the largest percentage of the property. Would get that zoning, so if you owned a piece of property that had twenty percent was in the Culver two mile limit. And eighty percent was in Marshall County, Marshall County took that jurisdiction.
And that went by partial.
If more, if the majority of the land was in Culver's two mile limit, they got the jurisdiction, so. That's how, and the reason for that was, there was confusion on how, who would handle the zoning and how can you zone. With one piece of property, two ways, it was designed so that there would be no confusion in terms of that.
So wait.
That occurred ba- basically in two thousand six.
You could technically have had a farm made up of five parcels, and two of them were in town, and three were in the county.
Yes, it was done on our, it's not on who owned it.
You're gonna be zone S one, if you're in town?
That, that, no, that, yes, yes. That could easily change today. And it would, it would be up to the jurisdiction to change it.
Okay, so it 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 divided by parcels, that's, thank you, didn't know that. Two thousand six.
So, all I'm saying, some of those were found briefly, weird because.
Because of that, okay.
They kinda hopscotch around as a result.
How's the hallway contingency, anybody, anybody else got? But, sorry.
Kevin, I have, I have one comment that, that I would like to do there.
I'm gonna ask the room, just for a minute, please, thank you.
Uh one thing that I think they are also concerned about is the. The agriculture, the zoning that's already in effect, that is S one, um as, well, like Larry Miller. A lot of you know Larry Miller, he came in because he wanted to build a grain bin, at that time, it was in an S one territory. And your height limit is thirty-five feet, well.
And S one. Fifty in S one.
I'm sorry?
Fifty in S one, not thirty-five.
Fifty in S one. Okay, okay, but anyway, either way, if I wanna build a grain bin or put up a leg or something for agriculture, you can't do that. Without variances, which is another process that they have to go through. So, so that the S one area that we have in the zoning now. I I really think you should look at and put part of that back into agriculture zoning, which is what.
It it is, that's what I'm thinking, you're exactly right.
While that is working on our zoning ordinance, that.
That has to go in.
But it's, it's a comment that a lot of these farmers are, are concerned about, because that would be a zoning thing that y'all would be under controlling. And.
You wanna put from, we need to consider S one to A one, we need to make.
So this is just a a comment in response to that, that aside from individual property owners coming in. And seeking a zoning change for their property or a variance for, to build something taller. Um there's a process to make a, a broader map change. Um so if if we collected, you know, ten or twenty property owners that wanted to see that S one to A one. Um there's a, a way to do that all in one application, rather than each individual property owner, so that could be something that if. If there are concerns that you hear and you gather some people as, as the council looking at making zoning changes. Uh later this year, that maybe that could be all wrapped in a one map.
The, we're gonna rezone these ten.
You can treat it as just those ten, or you can say we're changing the entire, the entire map of. And everything else would stay the same except for those, those couple of things.
Unless somebody wanted to stay S one.
See the recording and.
Yes.
Yeah, hanging up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, do you just decide on this as a committee yourself, or is this voted on, how does this work with zoning? I mean, are you gonna have another meeting on this, because it doesn't seem, it just seems like we're at a, a plateau, like where are we going with this?
So.
You know, we, so this plan eventually goes through an adoption process where your plan commission adopts it. Your town council adopts it, we've delayed that, you advertise the adoption of that. Um so technically, if we make changes to it, which is not a problem at any stage. But if we make changes to it, we wanna do that before there's an adoption of it, so that the final one that goes out. To the public and gets advertised for adoption, has to be advertised over a period of days.
Eventually, we've no state, what you guys do.
Eventually, we've no say what you guys do.
But if that's.
Decide to do it, we have no say.
Yeah.
Is it voted on or is it done by the council sitting in front of us is what I want to know.
Eventually, this body as well as the plan commission body.
We have no say.
Vote to adopt it.
Okay.
We have no say.
All right. So so my question is, if you have another meeting on this, is this box guy gonna be here? The guy for the.
He's on the plan commission, but yeah, sometimes.
I think you have a big concern. Most of my.
I'm I'm sorry. So. There will not be a proposal for the zoning. What we're looking at is the planning. What I've done tonight is try to record some of these ideas so I can take them and incorporate your voices directly. As well as the council will take this, incorporate the voices and your concerns into a a planning book that needs your voices and concerns. What I've heard tonight on page fifty-seven. Preservation rural management and agriculture. We need to revisit that because to your point, sir, farmers, right? And what are you gonna do? And I wanted to address that, and we'll talk about it. For as far as language, what I've heard is you don't have a why for zoning. So you haven't acted on it in two comprehensive plans. It has to be state statute says we can do it, so we have to acknowledge we can do it. But we also need to say currently, there's not a direct reason as to why we're doing it. And therefore, it's a consideration, but not one that the town's ready to act on to some language, right? And I'm not a wordsmith tonight, but that's what I heard you guys say. My job was to record questions to take to. MACOG and hear your voices and for the comprehensive plan committee and try to work that those voices back into it.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead. Understand this, the adoption of this comprehensive plan has no effect on zoning day one.
No.
That's correct.
Not not at lick.
And I think.
Thirty years.
This plan doesn't get adopted until these folks on the council vote to adopt it. And they've just given you an audience for probably an hour and a half and have heard your concerns and are gonna make substantive changes in response to that. So I think you your voices have been heard with those specific things that Kevin mentioned.
Is the whole thing is we don't want to change.
Exactly.
We don't want to change. We don't. We don't want all you to decide. We're here to tell you that we don't want it done. That's what we're telling you. You hear that? All of you. You're not getting it. And it's the date of April eleventh. No, that's been postponed.
Ma'am, I would recommend if you have another meeting similar to this, get a better venue. Well, I don't know. The steering committee that helped put this plan together. Be there. I tell you, they have a damn clue what they're doing. They need to be there because they don't know. They don't have a clue.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Nancy Miller, sixteen, two seventy, Pear Road. I'd like to revisit what Mrs. Hanson said because I thought it was right to the point and exactly what most of us are thinking. The fact that you are talking about something that could happen. That's a little scary. Because we don't. When we don't understand. And we don't even know who might make these decisions in the future. In in other words, it could be a completely different board that hasn't heard any of this that makes that decision. So if you then would follow her suggestion and remove that language. I think you need to think about putting in something that says. How you would determine if there is a need to expand. Because if there are no parameters for that need. Then it could just happen at at a whim. We would like for there to be definition and clarity in what you would expect before you would make that change.
Ma'am, go ahead, ma'am.
The farmers over here. Any of you actually know? Having been going on like two, now three years.
You can do that in the survey.
Nothing, nothing.
I guess my question is, do any? Any of the people have.
And in response to that.
What newspaper do they read?
They're in the agriculture.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I like I said, I I just got here and and I've lived here all my life, but I just started working for these guys in in January. So I haven't been involved in the process, but um, I would just say that. Ha- having worked in government, it is hard to get people to come and voice their opinion. This is. This is great. I'm enjoying getting this feedback. I'm sure the folks. What's that? Sure, but and that's that's what it takes. That's what it takes to get people motivated. I mean, this has been in the newspaper a million times. It's been on on emails. There's been people, the farmers.
We're on social media.
Yeah, no, no. I'm gonna come back to that point, though, that we didn't reach you. Yes. What's the best way to reach out? Because we do have a website. There's newspaper, but I want to make sure it doesn't matter.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Send it out. That's fair enough.
About sending it to the affected people that could be in that area.
Okay.
Appreciate it. And mail's the best way to do that, and we need to get that. Thank you. No, I've done. I I made it sure. Sorry. Just making sure. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we've got. We've got people online. We're gonna take a question or I don't know how many people we have on there, Karen.
Got fifteen.
Okay, first whoever's first, go ahead and state your name and and your address, please.
If there's anybody out there that wants.
Could be they.
Anyone else on the line?
Yeah, I. This is Ben Huyan, one, six, two, four, nine, Redwood Road.
Sir, can you repeat yourself a little bit or or get closer to your phone or whatever it is?
This is Ben Huyan. One, six, two, four, nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
I try to mute them to not get that, and they keep on meeting, so I don't know if they're wanting to speak or or what, so I'm just. I want to be. There may be somebody here.
Is there anyone else on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is Ben Huyan, one, six, two, four, nine, Redwood Road. Um, if this zoning goes through. Who would I have to go through to build something on my property? Would it be the county or would it still be the city?
So just to clarify, sir, this is Sean Cerisi, the city attorney, and I don't know how long you've been on here. But uh, one of the main discussions is that the only thing that's up for consideration in the imminent future is the adoption of the comprehensive plan. And we. There's been discussion that the council is likely to remove language that would speak about expanding the two mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. But e- even if that language were in the comprehensive plan, that would not change those boundaries. There would have to be many public approvals with the county government to do so. But so if you're not in the town's jurisdiction right now, you would still have to go to the county for their building permit processes. Um, for the very foreseeable future, um, because even once this comprehensive plan passes, it won't make any changes to the zoning jurisdiction.
Okay, I do. I do have another question. If I have a home-based um, business. Would that be affected?
Are you in the two mile zone?
Um, I'm on the south side of Hibbert.
No. No.
So no, the answer would be no.
Be a county question.
That's a county question.
Okay, so I wouldn't be affected any permit or anything like that by the city if it were adopted.
When you said it were adopted, sir, are you talking about the plan or we change the zoning?
Change the zoning.
Press, can you see? Does Hibbert even?
You would be right on a border, so it's gonna be difficult to answer that question, to be honest.
Because because as of right now, the zoning boundary, I believe, is my property line.
Yeah, would affect.
Okay.
Agreed.
So if you change the zoning boundary into me being in Culver zoning.
Gentleman behind you is white, cell phones on.
Would my home-based business be affected?
Go ahead, John. No, please.
Yeah, just as of right now, it would not because this plan will not change the zoning boundaries regardless of what's in this plan. In order to change the zoning boundaries, there would. You would be provided with a letter in the mail saying it was being changed. Uh, and and there would be many public approvals, and the council in their discussion tonight has indicated that they're not intending to expand that zoning jurisdiction in any time in the foreseeable future, and they're gonna change the language in this plan to reflect that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on line?
Hi, yes. My name is Jamie Thomas.
Go ahead.
And my address is one, seven, six, four, three, Sixteenth Road. And I'm just wondering if you're not gonna change the zoning. What is all the talk about the five thousand dollars I keep reading and seeing on the news? That you can get for moving to Culver or changing your address to Culver, working in Culver, that you're not gonna change the zoning? Like, is that a true thing?
Then away we go.
Yeah.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you still hear me?
Can you still hear?
I can still hear you. I'm just curious if it's a real thing.
Yeah, it it. So there is a.
Like, you're not. You're. You don't want to zone the town to make it look bigger. You're saying you're not going to. But you want to pay people to come to Culver to make it look bigger.
Okay, um, so there's a national program called Make My Move, and it's to attract uh, remote workers and people into smaller areas, even cities. And it's several different states across the Union are involved in it. Indiana is one of them. Culver is a town that is involved in this program. Gentleman correctly pointed out, we've had seen a population drop. We like to welcome people make Culver a small town where they can work and raise their families. As a matter of fact, your time is perfect. I had a gentleman contact me today. They have a young daughter. They're moving to Culver. They wanted more information on the plan. It does afford an incentive for five thousand dollars to move in. It comes in the form, a lot of different forms. One of them is a waiver from school fees, and there's some incentives there. The the child's gonna enroll in Culver community. We gave them the information. It's an independent program. You can go to Culver's website um, for new residents, and it's a program. Has nothing to do with you changing your address and paying five thousand dollars for it. I truly do appreciate the question, clarification.
Why do you want to expand? Do you want people to come here and live? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Why do you want to expand?
Anyone else on line? Okay, any other questions before we.
Where's the five thousand come from?
I know we're just part of the South Bend, Elkhart region that has that program, and they provide some of the incentives. Some of the local businesses can participate if they want. I can play of offering a gift card. You could offer a parfa pass. It depends on the community and what they're willing to offer. We haven't had anyone. Forgot to take this. Oh, would be a great place to live, so they. Our our region chose Culver for Marshall County. But it's a regional, South Bend, Elkhart regional partnership program. I think it's called Make My Move.
It is Make My Move.
Do we feel that we've accomplished anything tonight?
Oh, no. Nope.
I think that I think that we have. I think everyone up here has heard your opinions of what we do next or what they do next. We'll have to wait and see, but at least they have to listen to us. And they know, the council members, that's it. At least they have listened to us and they know what we're what we're feeling. That's more than any of the farmers have heard before, and we thank them for letting us come in and speak our piece. And hopefully, something will come out of it. They've already made notes that things that they want to change in the wording. Um, I appreciate all of you coming, and I appreciate them listening to us. At least we got the. We got to speak. We got. We got our our things heard.
More important, beyond beyond the comprehensive plan, what I wrote in my notes, just so I can share it with you, is that we have a group who's traditionally not had a voice when we're talking about things in town. And even though you live beyond the limits, this town is still a part of you guys and part, and it affects you. And I think that that frustration has created some of the the reverb on this and rightfully so. So extended invitation doesn't mean you have to be the ones that come to me. I need. We need to get out and get to to your point. We need to get some people on the boards, and we need to hear your voice. Especially if we're gonna make decisions on it. That's a bigger issue that I'm not gonna let go. The second thing is my email and my phone number is on the website. I got cards. You got concerns? Talk to me. If there is something that needs to go, what I heard tonight, if you guys need to be involved in it, we need to get mailers out if we can. I'll try to get on websites and everything else, but if it's a big decision, I I hear you. We'll do the best we can.
It would be great to take the petition and have each address. But, you know, if we could get a coalition of the addresses to be able to do that. Um, I know you can go on GIS and mark certain areas to try to collect addresses, but it wouldn't hurt also to be able to turn to an advisory group or some. Somebody like I turned to Marlene when I'm, you know, thinking about township and.
I get junk mail all the time with current resident of.
So if I throw that current resident of, it's getting to you. All right.
A lot of us throw those out, but Marlene's great at being able to get people to come. I mean, look, this is probably you calling and and working that. We need to be able to go to somebody and go, hey, we've got a solar committee forming to look at the ordinance. We need some farmers on it.
Yes, next week.
Uh, we've got someone working on our our all of our zoning ordinances because there's inconsistencies. We've had problems with plan commission being able to enforce where there's an inconsistency. So we've got an attorney reviewing all of that. It would be nice if we could have uh, people who work with our team to look at those and because you you're gonna bring up other issues that nobody here is gonna think that. Now, one of the planning commission is necessarily gonna think of.
Well.
I have. I just a misnomer that I've always made the assumption. Maybe I'm wrong. But everything that every time I've ever seen a call from the city of Culver that said they'd like some volunteers, it says I have to live in the city. So I'm missing one.
Now, well, that's with certain committees by statute, Paul, like if if it says you have to live within city limits to serve on redevelopment commission, for example, or plan commission. There's certain appointments that have to be that we don't have a choice. It's the same thing with. Yeah, your elected bodies, but um, when we did a call out for this. Uh, we did do a press release. We did do some flyers around town. We did the TGL email. Some of you might not be on the TGL list. We did create a separate website. We put it on our website, posted on the bulletin board. We got like twenty-five volunteers that showed up, but then when we did public engagement, we had a lot of other people show up that. We went to the farmer's market. We went to the library. We went to the school. We went to Lake Max and Kentucky Country Club even. Like, we tried to take the plan out to people and have people give us feedback on it. Uh, whether they did it online or in person at all those events. Um, but it'd be great if we could say, hey, Marlene, can you get the farmers together and we'll put this in front of them?
How about this?
See what they think.
Uh, to be on the plant commission, it's not gonna be citizen in Culver. I understand that legality is called that. You ever heard about advisory committees?
That's that's what.
Advisory boards?
And that's what that sort, that's a separate sort. That kind of stuff is where we need to start looking at. But thank. Yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent.
I have a question. If I wanted. If I wanted, it's, it looks like a planning commission is the one that kinda deals with zoning issues and splitting land and stuff like that. If I wanna know what's going on with them, when their meetings are and what they're talking about, how do, how do I find out about it?
Yeah, if, so what we're doing is we post outside the town hall and.
I live on Queen Road.
Stay, stay with me. Not the only place we're at, Russ. I, I hear you. There's also, if you go to and you just do a town, do a Google search for town of Culver, it'll take you to our website. All you have to do is scroll to the bottom of that website. There's a calendar. There's also a list of every meeting that's gonna be that month, I'm updating. If you click the meeting, there'll be sometimes a description of it. That includes planning commission, that included this work session tonight. Russ just set me up, by the way. Everything that we're gonna put out there, I've been, be patient with me, cause I'm learning the website and you're not looking at the most tech savvy guy. But I'm trying to get that out there, get it on the website. All the minutes Karen produces go on that website. You can go back in time. We've got lots of minutes, good, good debates, a lot of different ordinances, all the regulations, everything's on there. So it's kinda one-stop shopping.
The plan commission meeting.
Sorry.
The third Tuesday.
There we go.
Up every month at six-thirty in this room.
And much of what the plan commission has to do, including, uh, making a recommendation on this comprehensive plan, by state statute requires a public hearing. And all of those public hearings are gonna have notices that are published in either the Culver Citizen or the, or the Plymouth Pilot. So, um, those actions are in the newspaper as well, in the formal legal ads.
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm a Paul Amor vendor at the Culver Farmers Market. I, I do wanna point out, I'm there every week. I have never seen anybody there asking me my opinion.
We were, we were there two weekends in a row with this plan with big posters and over the summer.
Over the summer?
Yeah.
Did you walk around, talk to the vendors?
Yeah, we had, we had several people work it, but we were also at the library. We were also at the depot. We're at the community school. I'm surprised you didn't see us. We were right under the depot because it was so windy. We had posters blowing all over the place. That's the point that we were working to.
Well, I'm an active farmer. I mean, and I'm there well after the hours. You could've walked up and said, hey, mister farmer, what's your?
Take to be fair. To be fair, obviously you guys are here tonight because we, for what? We did not do a good enough job. Absolutely, to your point.
And you did that.
We can split that, well, and you're absolutely, that's why we're sitting here tonight. You're absolutely.
I think a little bit since the nature of, of, I mean, I've, I've lived in town most of my life cause I like town stuff. And there's a lot of stuff in this plan that are about towny kinda things that if you, you choose to live out in the country, probably isn't gonna pique your interest. But when something like this zoning thing, it's, it's, you think it's gonna affect you negatively, that's when you wanna get involved and put the effort in. And I understand, that's just human nature. I, if it were, this were a, an agricultural plan solely, I probably wouldn't pay attention to it until I saw on the news that it was gonna affect something.
It wasn't that or not paying attention. Again, nobody ever came and talked to me. I can get it, you talked to Chad Gard.
No, but.
And he's only two booths down from me.
But it was a long time ago and to your point, we did not do a good enough job of reaching out.
I say, I got it pretty good.
Yeah. Oh, I'm not.
Honestly, some of our best turnout input came from the farmer's market. I mean, you guys have great foot traffic. We had little kids look at it. We had some young teenagers and twenty-something year olds. We rarely get them to give input, so.
But again.
Yeah, I didn't walk around, cause I was working the booth.
I understand that too, but the farmer was working the booth. Most of the people at the farmer market are farmers. They're shoppers of the farmer market.
You know, what's your timeline here going forward? When, when will you guys anticipate making a decision on your comprehensive plan and moving forward with that?
I don't think we have a specific date on it. I'm hearing tonight what we've heard. I mean, it would be, Joel, irresponsible on our part to say, we're gonna do this on this particular date. I, 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 I think and I applaud and thank everyone here that's come and participated. And I think we've heard what you said. And as far as a, a timeline and a plan, I think that's kinda static right now. Would you agree, Jenny?
Yeah, I would say it's gonna take a few weeks to make the changes.
When will that be?
And get, there's other feedback too that we're going through. So we're gonna have to sit down, make actual changes. And then the new copy has to go to the plan commission and then come back here as well. So we were originally planning on having it adopted in like April or May, but it's probably gonna be like June or July.
We have announced the planning. We, so the planning commission will be meeting. And originally, we were, we were gonna put it in front of the planning commission next month. Given the feedback we received tonight, we need to incorporate. We will, I think it would be a great idea to still conduct that public hearing with the planning commission. And if y'all nod in your head, I'm gonna make sure we get a bigger venue. That one's on me, go out there and tell people. But I'll make sure that we have a bigger venue for the planning commission. And I think more importantly, that public hearing may be some more possibly a feedback and see what, introduce some of the changes maybe that you've all presented us with. That way you can hear them for your firsthand. And to your point, do a better job of getting people involved. Absolutely, sir, absolutely, hundred percent. And believe me, I, I'm gonna catch heck because my brother-in-law and father-in-law are both farmers for multiple generations and I, they're gonna get on me, so thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody at six-thirty. I'd like to thank everybody again for their participation, their comments. Did not fall on deaf ears. And there will be more hearings. This is far from a done deal, so.
I have one other comment before y'all leave. They said they wanted names and addresses and phone numbers. I have these petitions out, but for any of you that, that can, uh, call me, I'll make up new to list that has a place for phone numbers and names and addresses so that they can contact us. I'll have some in my office. Joyce will have some in her house. My sister Connie has, uh, some, she'll have some at the feed store or call me. Most all of you have my address. I'll have some, I can write down your name and address and phone number so we can get as many names and phone numbers as we can to contact everybody, so.
Thank you, Marlene.
Appreciate everybody coming. We really.
Thanks, everybody.